How about that for a gallop?
I call the September the 10th work session of City Council to order. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Mrs. Sinis?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Rowe?
Here. First, I want to thank everybody for the flexibility and your nimbleness to -- for us to change the venue. This is such an important discussion this evening that we felt it was really important to provide seating for anybody that wanted to attend this. And so, thank you for your flexibility. We'll get right down to the heart of the matter. And we'll be discussing tonight at least two things. The hurricane. And then the second, we'll have a little business item about the scheduling of the next council meeting. And with that, I'll ask our city manager, Dr. Patton, to come forward.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. At 8:30 a.m. this morning, with authority vested in me as city manager, I signed the declaration of local emergency due to the threat of Hurricane Floyd impacting Portsmouth, Virginia. The declaration reads thusly. Whereas the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, is facing a condition of extreme threat to the lives, safety, and property of the residents of the city in connection with the threat of Hurricane Florence impacting the city. And whereas, as a result of this threat, the declaration of a local emergency by the city's Director of Emergency Management is necessary to permit the full powers of government to deal effectively with the hazardous situation. Now, therefore, it is declared pursuant to the powers granted by Section 2-658 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Title 44, Chapter 3.2 of the Code of Virginia, and Section 5.02 of the Portsmouth City Charter, and Article 13 of the Portsmouth City Code, that a local emergency exists in the city of Portsmouth effective immediately this 10th day of September 2018 at 08:30 a.m. The declaration shall remain in effect for 14 days from the date hereof until confirmed, modified, extended, or canceled by the official recorded vote of the City Council for the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, whichever occurs first. All government officials are at the moment vested with such authority as may be granted by law because of this declaration. Signed, L. Pettis Patton, City Manager and Director of Emergency Management. I pause to say that I am wearing my emergency management gear as a result of the fire department asking me to wear this to show the seriousness of the matter of which we are facing. Mayor and members of City Council, since the first week in June, the city's emergency management team began our 2018 hurricane preparation and staged two days of simulations of a horrific hurricane situation in June in preparation for whatever may come. Let me provide for you a little background of which we officially opened the Emergency Operations Center on yesterday, Sunday, September the 9th. We participated in a Virginia Department of Emergency Management, FEMA, and federal agencies conference call. We hosted a meeting with key staff on yesterday to review and discuss planning strategies. We were in contact with key partners for discussions, even if they were not at the center for the meeting. I'd like to thank Dr. Bracy for taking my many calls on yesterday, Sunday, of which we needed his voice in some decisions of which we had to make. At 8:30 a.m. this morning, I hosted a hurricane preparedness meeting with city staff, key partners from Portsmouth Public Schools, the Sheriff Department, our constitutional officers, and others to ensure we are all prepared and ready to put our planning into action. At 2:30 today, we participated in a conference call with Governor Northam and Dr. Jeff Stern, who is the State of Virginia Emergency Coordinator. The governor asked all participants on the call -- on the conference call to make sure the general public understands the seriousness of the approaching hurricane impacting the state of Virginia. He has declared the state of emergency, and over 1,200 National Guard troops will be dispersed where needed across the state. Late this evening, and I'm going to say it's right now, and Captain Arnold will give you further information, that the governor may order, or he has ordered, an evacuation of Zone A. And B is still pending for Hampton Roads and surrounding communities. You will hear more about this in the briefing. Tonight during the public work session, we will focus our total attention on Hurricane Florence preparation. City staff will provide updates on key aspects of preparation. The briefings will go forward as outlined. Fire Chief Jim Hoffler will provide opening remarks on the city's emergency management operations. Captain Justin Arnold, Deputy Coordinator of Emergency Management, will provide an update on the current forecast and other broad areas of preparation to include the coordination with Superintendent Bracy and Portsmouth Public Schools, the EOC activation, internal and external communications, sheltering with input from Mrs. Pamela Littlehill, who is our Director of Social Services. Mr. Youssef Kalyir will provide an update on public works, streets, and highways preparation. Mrs. Aaron Tremere will provide an update on public utilities, waste management, pet sheltering, and service animals. Our city attorney, Mr. Solomon Ashwee, will provide the update. Communications and media outreach, Mr. LaVores Pace, Deputy City Manager, will provide the update. At this time, we proceed as those who I have called on with Fire Chief Hoffler, followed by Captain Arnold, followed by Mr. Kalyir, Aaron Tremere, City Attorney, and Mr. LaVores Pace. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker is here now. If everybody hasn't seen, Mayor Rowe, members of council, Dr. Patton. Just wanted to give you all a brief overview of the preparedness of the fire department. About a year ago, when Matthew came through, we asked our people, what do we need to be doing better to make it better on the street for the folks out there? They gave us a number of things that we need to do. Equipment to protect them from the waters, high-water vehicles to get in and out, boats. We took all this back to our partners within the city, different departments, our city manager. And y'all provided the funding for these things. So, I can tell you without a doubt that our department, our personnel have always been the best. Now, we have the best stuff to deal with this high-water incidence that we'll have. And for the first time in my career, I feel very comfortable about having our folks out there operating in rising waters, helping our citizens. This couldn't have been done without the help of the whole team here in Portsmouth. So, I appreciate it because it protects our people who are out there. That's it in a nutshell from me. I'm going to turn the technical side of it over to our Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, Captain Justin Arnold.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I know we've had some trying times ahead of us, but I promise you we'll get through it. We've been working feverishly around the clock since Thursday to not only prepare our public safety partners, our citizens, and our department heads for the incoming storm this week. To give you a little background on the forecast, it's almost impossible storm to keep up with because it changes literally by the hour. Of the last updated 5 o'clock, the Category 4 storm is still on a western-northwest track, scheduled to become a possible Cat 5 overnight. There's two main scenarios that we need to focus on. One is a westwardly track that would make the eye of the storm come very close to Wilmington, North Carolina, track westward through Raleigh, and make a curve toward Roanoke, Virginia. This would dump around 25 inches of rain to the western part of our state, producing historic flooding that they haven't seen since the 1980s. The other scenario that's a little more dangerous for us is once it impacts the North Carolina coast, anywhere from Wilmington upwards of Naxhead, it will make a small right-hand turn, then stall over top of Hampton Roads for a minimum of three to four days. That's going to produce that 25-inch rainfall with upwards of 30 inches of rain here in Hampton Roads. So, there's two widely different scenarios, but two very significant scenarios. And no matter where this hurricane does make landfall within that North Carolina coastline, we are going to feel effects from that. We have a very saturated ground. We've had three to four inches of rain in the last 48 hours alone, on top of the 60 inches of rain that we've had this year already. So, we're talking a great saturation of the ground already, coupled with a tropical system that's making its way toward us. So, definitely a system not to play with. As far as effects, we're looking at late Thursday, early Friday morning for the full brunt of the storm, and that's still dependent on the track. Even with, again, that Wilmington landfall, we're still looking at seven to 10 inches of rain. So, I think either scenario and how it plays out is going to -- we're going to have flooding regardless of the path. Now, ultimate things could happen. What we learned from Matthew, within the last six hours of that forecast, things changed. We had 18 inches of rain in a very short amount of time, and that was a forecasted storm that was supposed to turn off to the east and go out to sea. Hurricane Harvey also presented a problem. Hurricane Harvey had a very defined track that went into mainland Texas, up through Oklahoma. And within the last 12 hours, that storm made a hard right. Once it made landfall, did a couple circles around some very populated urban areas and dumped 30 to 40 inches of rain in a very short amount of time. So, we're looking at scenarios that stack up with those historic-type events. One thing I do want to clarify is the Know Your Zone evacuation strategy. The governor of Virginia, as we were intervening -- convening next door to discuss this, he did declare a mandatory evacuation for Zones A effective 8 a.m. tomorrow. We weren't expecting that until possibly later tomorrow night. So, that, again, shows the severity of the situation and how it's developing. They want to get the most people out of way at a reasonable amount of time. What I do want to focus on, though, because there's been some confusion throughout the public and the citizenry about the Know Your Zone evacuation strategy. Although these were made in correlation with flood zones, these do not reflect the flood zone. This is the evacuation strategy for all emergencies, hurricanes, tornadoes, terrorism events, anything. So, although there was some thinking about flooding that was put into this map through myself and through our VDEM partners, this is not all encompassing of a flood zone. So, although you could be in Zone A, that's a systematic approach to get the most populated areas evacuated in a systematic fashion to kind of dislodge the traffic jams we're accustomed to in a mass evacuation. So, I wanted to make that clear. And if there's any questions, I'd love to address it. Moving forward, you can see Zone A, it's a very large portion of our city. And if they do go to Zone B, we're talking upwards of 80,000 people that will be pushed out of their homes and recommended for evacuation to another location. How that's different for us is when we do evacuate these areas, we do have a forecast track that pushes everything west of us. So, we're trying to figure out the best-case scenario to tell people whether to go north or seek elsewhere than for our inland, say, Routes 460 and 58, because all we're going to do is move one problem into a very dangerous possible second problem. So, we're being very systematic in our thought process of how we explain to our citizens the proper way to leave. As far as pickup locations, we have designated three shelter locations. That will be Churchland Middle School, IC Norcom, which will be our medical needs shelter, and Wilson High School. For those that need transportation getting to the pre-landfall shelters, these are a list, and we'll send these out, a conclusion of this meeting, to our public. These are going to be the pickup points for our public transportation. HRT will cancel their routes. We will come around in our school buses and pick up these citizens that need transportation to their locations, to their shelters. This also includes PRHA, which is not listed. Those properties, we're going to go through those neighborhoods and make sure everyone is accounted for and can get to the shelter if they wish to evacuate. And I'd like to turn over now to Ms. Littlehill, who will go -- yes, sir.
Before you do that, let's make sure that you have no questions. Are there any questions from City Council?
When is this collection coming up?
The collection? Once we identify a time for the shelter, which we've been talking about Wednesday afternoon at the conclusion of school. We did get a notice today that Virginia Beach has already closed school Thursday and Friday, and canceled all activities Wednesday in preparation to open their shelters. That was our timeframe of thought. We're going to make sure that our shelters are 100% ready to go by 5 o'clock tomorrow. We've already have supplies being moved in, provisions being bought and purchased, bedding being delivered, et cetera. So, we hope by 5 o'clock tomorrow, in a worst-case scenario, we can open those doors and allow people to come in, if needed.
And I don't want to end -- I'm going to make a gross assumption here, that I've got the authority to open this up to any questions. This is how important this storm is. So, if you have a question about what Captain Arnold has briefed us on, please ask it. Dr. Bracy, do you have any comments about the shelter that you'd like to make? Not to put you on the spot. Okay. All right. Any questions from anybody? Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Bracy, our school superintendent.
Good evening to everyone. And we have definitely been working with the city to try to make sure that we can do everything that we can on our end to assist with this, being with the opening of the schools, the food stocked in our cafeterias, as well as transportation as well. This morning, we had the meeting, as Dr. Patton mentioned, and we talked through some of that. And Mr. Whiting, Lawrence Whiting, is our new Director of Auxiliary Services, and his group has been working with all of that, which entails transportation, food services, all of the key areas that will play an important role in this part. So, at this time, I'll let you give an update in terms of where we are and what we're doing.
Good evening. We have spent most of the day working with our social services. We've been identifying the schools that were going to be used as shelters, and a lot of logistics within the rooms, the actual rooms in the buildings we're going to be using. We were laying on things, food, services, transportation, and some of the other items that needed to be taken care of. Everything at this point has been identified. We're getting ready for the transportation portion as necessary, and manning of the shelters, and ensuring we have the correct personnel. The administration has been notified as to what areas of school are going to be used. And for the most part, we should be pretty much ready. And we're, like I said, dealing with Ms. Littlehill, and to make sure that everything on our end is done, and we're just trying to provide any other assistance that we can.
Thank you. Any questions of Dr. Bracy?
Well, I know one question that you all are probably wondering about is, what about school? When are we going to close? Well, I was waiting to -- for this meeting to determine the severity of that, and then the planning that it will take to move the evacuation. If we're going to start going into schools as early as Wednesday morning, then that means ordinarily, of course, you know we won't be in school. So, those are the things that we need to know so that we can go ahead and let our folks know. We know Thursday and Friday, we can already say that we won't be here. But Wednesday, I'm trying to wait, and maybe right after this, we have a meeting and we'll determine. So, we'll try to get that out as early as possible, if not this evening, first thing in the morning, to let parents know so they can make preparation as well.
Thank you, sir. Captain Arnold, are you finished?
Just closing remarks. As far as operations go, our EOC was opened yesterday at 8 a.m. We're staffed around the clock. Starting tomorrow, we're going to be 24/7 with somebody inside the EOC, making sure that things are planned before they happen. Instead of being reactive, we're going to try our best to be proactive in this event. So, our staffing will be 24/7 starting tomorrow morning. As of now, we're virtual in the PMs once we leave, but we're still connected. So, please, any questions you may have, any citizen complaints or citizen worry, please forward them to our office. We'd be more than happy to make them feel comfortable. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Littlehill and let her have a moment to speak on shelters.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As was discussed, DSS graciously, we had a really good flow of running around with the school system. We actually identified where we would be, how we would be setting up. So, staff will have clear directions on how to navigate the citizens through the buildings. The DSS team actually met today, so that we have a whole list of teams, and they will be assigned depending on when the schools open, they will be dispersed. In addition to DSS being on-site, DSS staff will be on-site for 24 hours to man the shelters. So, nobody has to worry about, well, we'll be there. We also identified schools, rooms within the schools for dormitory purposes. So, if staff need to take a break and sleep, we have identified rooms to do so. In addition to being on-site with DSS, behavioral health will be on-site. They will assist with any crisis intervention needs that we may have there. Parks and Recreation will also be there. The reason why we also collaborate with them is because, again, when you have a shelter and you have that many people, and you have children and other things going on, sometimes we might need their support in helping us entertain some of the children that are there. Once we get notification from the city manager, when the shelter is to open, staff will be there. Usually, they let us know a couple hours early. Staff is ready to be on-site. Staff is also prepared to be in place as needed. So, the minute we get the go-ahead, staff will be in position on this side. We encourage most of the staff to stay on this side for obvious reasons. In addition, when we get the word for the shelter to actually close, again, we'll make sure that all citizens are accounted for. We usually keep track of all that information. So, should somebody call, and usually ask us who's in there and what's going on, we have that information on hand. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? First, from council. Any questions from other people? All right. Our next presenter.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Give you a little brief about the Department of Public Works and our preparations. Our fleet division, we are -- we got plenty of fuel. We just stopped everything today. We have all the fuel we need for right now. We're up to capacity on both our gas stations that are on Frederick and in Churchland. We have tow trucks ready for -- to move -- remove vehicles that are blocking roads during the storm if we need to access. Our department, our division of property management, we are securing city facilities, and we are lifting items off the floors as much as possible. We have sandbags available for buildings that needs it. If anybody from -- in our city buildings need sandbags, could get in touch with us, and we have them available. With our streets and highways, all of our equipments are ready. We are locating few trucks and other equipments at our landfill, high ground. We are combining our personnel, different divisions together, and we are always going to be helping with mostly the flooding areas if we need the help. We will start 12-hour shifts tomorrow, and we are in the process of finalizing a staging area in preparations to receive debris from the storm whenever it happens. Any questions?
First question is, we typically open up our garages for citizens who want to park at a higher elevation. When will that happen? We've done that, okay.
Yes, sir.
The second thing, will there be sandbags available for the public? And if so, where would they go to get that? The bag itself, they would have to do the sand, I'm sure.
Typically, we don't have bags available for the public.
Is that something that we could look into, Dr. Penn?
Look into it, Mayor, and get back to you this morning, isn't it?
Okay. And business? Well, that's, yeah, actually what I was thinking about. All right. So, we just asked the city manager to look at the possibility of getting empty sandbags available for anybody that thinks that they need them. You have to get your own sand. We don't have that.
No.
No. I saw a question. Well, any other questions from City Council? Yes, Bill?
How about the zones? Mayor, how about the zones? Where can citizens source what zone they're living in?
Well, online is okay, but not everyone is online, and power goes out, they wouldn't be able to go there.
What we are doing, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Pace is going to report on that, we have three people right now that are hurricane help desk. And we are giving those numbers out where citizens can call and ask, what zone am I in? We're also working with the fire department, and chief can speak to it, where they have on their vehicles that they could -- they will be going through communities to let the communities know what zone they're in. And they can do that through microphones and alerting them. So, we will start that in the morning, letting people know what zone. But we've had a lot of people today that have been reaching out as a result of information going out, asking, what zone am I in? We had, I know of one call, lady called and said, what zone am I in? But she didn't live in Portsmouth. She lived in Chesapeake. So, we did give the number where she could call to find out what zone that she was in. So, people are just asking information about what zones they're in, and we're trying to provide that.
Okay.
Okay? And we -- it's all on our -- and he'll tell you, it's all on Channel 48 and other media that we're putting out.
We've had questions today about my ditch, my storm drain, and the help desk is going to answer those questions. And you'll have that telephone number for us at the end of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, for the public, if you have a question about a storm drain or a ditch, this storm will most likely overcome our drainage system. But if you have a concern, please call the number that Mr. LaVores Pace will give. There's a question in the back. Would you stand up, sir, so we can hear your question?
Yes, sir. An emergency evacuation, if there's a help, is there legal penalty if a citizen decides not to evacuate? And what is the compliance criteria?
Okay. The question is, is what is the compliance criteria if there's a mandatory evacuation notice? Dr. Penn?
I'll have Captain Arnold to answer that. So, I understand what's the penalty if someone chooses not to evacuate a mandatory zone? The fact is, we're going to help people until we are no longer capable to assist based on our own safety. That comes with a cost. If you stay in your home and you are inundated with floodwaters and high winds, there is a capability that we can't -- or we cannot accommodate. So, there will become a time where we do not respond into zones that are previously evacuated because we have to narrow our pool down. So, really, I don't think there's a law enforcement requirement that you're going to go to jail. There's nothing of that magnitude. But it comes down to your personal safety and our ability to come to you. If I answered that?
Thank you. Sean?
Timeframe?
The order of staff.
That's going to be an internal decision with our law enforcement partners and our public safety team as a whole, including Public Works, because we're going to have to clear the main arteries. We're going to make sure it's safe to come back in. If there's downed power lines, hazardous materials, we have to get in there and make sure those areas are safe for you to return.
Again, if you have a question, please stand up so I can see you, and then the rest of us can hear you. Any other questions? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Brief presentation. Brief presentation on what we're doing for Public Utilities in efforts to prepare for this hurricane. Effective tomorrow at 5:00 PM, we will be suspending all waste management services until further notice. We are also relocating our waste management fleet to high ground at the Cranny Island landfill, so that we can be better prepared to respond to the cleanup efforts after the storm. In Public Utilities, out at Lake Kilby Water Treatment Plant, we have procured and will continue to procure chemicals, supplies, and fuel for our generators and the chemicals we need to treat the water. We have opened the sluice gates at all four dams in an effort to lower lake levels in anticipation of the rain that we're expecting. We are in constant communication with the Directors of Public Utilities in both Suffolk and Chesapeake and updating them on our readiness and preparation, as well as receiving information from them. And the contractor on our filter project is going to be removing the tower crane boom and counterweight by close of business Wednesday. He will also be removing all ENS measures and securing all of the materials at the site. Our operations center is procuring bypass pumps for our sanitary sewer pump stations, fueling all of our vehicles and generators to make sure everything is operational. The downtown project, the contractor for that, will be removing all ENS measures, securing materials, and removing and opening streets by close of business Tuesday. And shift staff at both Lake Kilby and at our operations center will be on double duty beginning Wednesday evening to ensure continuity of our services during and after the storm.
Any questions? When you said that you contacted Chesapeake and Suffolk, it gave me also the thought, have we reached out to the Coast Guard, the Navy, the Naval Hospital? We, we have, so we're in contact with them. All right. Any questions of our Director of Public Utilities? None? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Let me first give a public service announcement with one regard to one's vehicles. In the last couple of weather events we've had, of course, as you all know, eventually we'll have some brave citizens who will end up either driving through water or snow and getting their vehicles stuck in the roadway. When we had our last major weather event, the fire and police department ended up coordinating off, quarantining certain streets because there was a vehicle left in the roadway. I have provided Captain Arnold the authorities which allow the city to move those vehicles out of the street, so here's the public announcement. Citizens, please do not try to drive through standing water. If your vehicle is stranded in the roadway, I have provided police and fire the necessary authorities to push your vehicle out of the roadway, because we can't simply afford to have roadway shut down for standing vehicles. So that's the, the first part. Second, you may be asking, how is it that the city attorney ends up talking about animals? As you all are aware, the ADA does require access for service animals, so that's where we start. For the public, please understand, first and foremost, city shelters will accommodate service animals. When we talk about service animals, given the conditions we're, we're likely to be in, we're talking about dogs in large part. In some respect, I don't know of any service cats. I also know the ADA speaks to miniature ponies. Hopefully, we don't have anybody in Portsmouth with a miniature pony that's a service animal, so we're largely talking about dogs. So they will be accommodated in distillery shelters. However, we're asking all the citizens to please come prepared, bring your own supplies, carriers, leash, food, litter, records, their medical records and tags. Please consider the fact that in some situations, your animal's best location may be a second floor with food and water at your home, as opposed to going into a shelter, so please give some consideration. As Captain Arnold mentioned, the medical needs facilities at Norcom High School, however, the location for individuals with pets will be Churchland Middle, and that selection was made with staff in large part because there are a lot of hard surfaces at Churchland Middle that we can come behind and clean up and sanitize. We're looking to keep those animals in secluded areas away from where individuals may be staying, end of hallways, stairwells, or enclosed loading docks. Being mindful that others may have allergies, so we're gonna try to seclude those to some extent. I would suggest to anyone with an animal, if you have a concern, the Portsmouth Humane Society's Facebook page has some excellent checklist of things you need to bring, and again, if you end up bringing an animal to one of our facilities, please bring all supplies and medical records for them. We will be segregating animals based on whether or not we have their medical records. If we have their records and their shots and things are up to date, they will be in one area. If they're not, they'll be housed in, separate and apart from others. The secondary facility for animals only, not humans and animals, will be the Cavalier Manor Gym. We're telling everyone and making sure everyone knows, we will not be taking exotic animals because they can present some issues in terms of health. So we're talking cats and dogs with regard to the shelter system. Again, please be aware, your pet's space may be limited to your lap, your leash, or your crate during this event. We will have individuals from the city there to try to reduce any likelihood of injury and/or any other injury or disease with your animals. We will have animal control officers at the facility, and your animals will only be allowed to be walked in shifts. It will not be a free-for-all in terms of individuals, but we have taken into consideration, as many of us know from some major events, we may have some citizens who will not leave their home if they don't have some sort of quarters of consideration for their pets, and so we're trying to accommodate that as best we can. Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions from the public? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Just to give you some information relative to what we have disseminated to provide information to the public, of course, on September 6th, we uploaded to the city website a September National Preparedness Month information that was on our website that included Hurricane Florence information, and it also included hurricane preparedness information and links so that people could go there and get additional information as to how to prepare in disaster times. That was on the city's website. We also uploaded it to all of our social media networks, and just to give you information on that, communications outlets includes city website, Port City Communications Connections, which is over 3,500 subscribers, all of our social media websites, and listings to include Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor, that's over 40,000 subscribers, so that information went out to all of those people that are on those lists as well. We also sent information relative to three ways to stay informed, that we always provide that information so people know how to get information during a disaster. The public information, Hurricane Florence Help Desk, due to impending Hurricane Florence, the City of Portsmouth has established a help desk for citizens with questions and/or concerns about hurricane preparedness, the municipal services during the weather event, call 407-9143. Again, that number for the help desk is 407-9143. We have three people that will be maintaining those lines. If one person is on the line, it automatically rolls to another of the two lines. Again, just for your information, since this is being recorded, again, 407-19143, 407-9143, and that is our help desk line. Also, Portsmouth City Garages will be open due to the impending Hurricane Florence and out of an abundance of caution. City garages, County Harbor, Middle, and Water Street will be open and available for vehicles in low-lying areas on Wednesday, September 12th at noon. Vehicles may remain in the garages until the storm event ends or the city resumes its regular operations. And those, that's the information that I have that we've been sending out as well.
Any questions for LaVores? 407-9143, is that the number?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions at all from the public? Call that number.
We'd like for the public to know that the help desk will be manned from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. They will pick back up at 8:00 in the morning, but we will man it after work hours through the hurricane.
Right.
This has already started on 48, right?
Yes.
Ma'am, would you stand up and ask her a question? I was gonna put Ray on the spot, as you may know. Yeah. That, yeah.
All power outages should be reported directly to Dominion. We will be manning 24/7, so we will be handling all outages directly. And we are, we will have a liaison working with the cities, the various cities.
The liaison with the City of Portsmouth has already contacted the city manager, Mr. Bartholomew, provided me with the numbers, but as Councilman Smith said, that each of them have been assigned a city or a sector. He indicated that he has several cities of which he's overseeing, but as we did with Hurricane Florence, and I was in charge of electricity trying to get it back on, Mr. Bartholomew was very responsive in handling sectors of getting sectors and giving electricity back on and giving us updates that we could give the public. So he indicated we're back at it again, so we're real pleased to be working with him.
And then I'd just like to say, I can help you personally if you live in Williamsburg. I've been assigned to Williamsburg.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, we have provided the updates which were planned for all of the areas, for your information and for the public. We will be working into the evening. We will be hosting, as Dr. Bracy said, another meeting after this meeting to make some decisions. We're on deck from now until whenever. If it's Tuesday or Wednesday, we're on deck until then. We will be making some decisions as it pertains to the evacuations and as it relates to city employees and timeframes, and those kinds of questions are coming up, but I assured them that the most important thing for all of us is safety of every individual, so we're gonna do what is necessary to ensure that we're all safe, and we're on board until it's all the way over. Call us at any time if you have any questions. I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Dr. Patton, don't leave. As an elected official, I was invited to participate in that telephone call that took place this afternoon. The governor's wife was in town visiting our learning center, which was a very good visit, so because of that, I didn't get a chance to get into the conversation until it's about its last 10 minutes. And I must tell you that that conversation is serious. This is a big, big, important storm for the state of Virginia and for Hampton Roads and for the city of Portsmouth, and we've been just really lucky that we have not had a major hurricane hit us. And as Dr. Patton said, the primary issue is safety of all of our citizens. So I implore every citizen to be careful, seek high ground, seek shelter, pay attention to evacuation orders. And I do have a question, because most of our central business district is in Zone A. Now that the governor has issued a mandatory order, I would assume that it would be a requirement that the businesses not be open?
And Mayor, if you see, Mr. Moore is in audience, and with that determination being made in the morning, they will be on the streets, he will have some of his team out making sure that the businesses know that this evacuation effort has been put in place and exactly what they need to do.
Any questions from anybody about the, yes? Elizabeth?
If this may be for Captain Arnold, if the, if the storm takes the westerly trend up the mountains, what does that do for the winds here in Hampton Roads?
Wednesday night, we're still in a, a close enough proximity to the eye of this storm to get tropical force winds well beyond the eye. It's gonna be a 300-mile-wide storm, so a matter if it makes landfall in Wilmington or Naggshead, the tropical storm force winds will be here Wednesday night, well ahead of the storm, and will probably precede the storm until it dissipates. That goes back to that saturation, too. It's gonna make these trees easier to fall down, something we need to worry about beyond, again, that, that center location.
We had, and I had shared this with the mayor, we had one, one comment after the, the conference call, which, you know, we, we are all very prayerful for our safety, but the comment was that there are not many people living who will have experienced what right now is coming after us. So we, we just need to take this very, very serious, and I did say to my team that so many times you hear conversations to say, oh, it ain't gonna come, don't worry about it, but I said to them, this is serious, we don't need to engage in those conversations, nature makes its own decision. We have the team that helps us to understand how serious this really is, and to truly enough, I haven't heard any of that today, everybody has been really on point.
Any other questions about the storm? We do have an item of business. We have counseled, counseled the council meeting for tomorrow night, both the work session and the regular session that would take place in this council chamber, and that's to allow, because of the storm, it should be self-evident, we did this out of an abundance of caution. However, and it's been brought to our attention by the city clerk's office that a prior city council adopted a motion that said whenever a council meeting is counseled, it automatically defaults to the following Tuesday, which would be the 18th. When we were made aware of this, and the reaction that I heard was, let's keep our regular scheduled meetings. So in order to do that, which would be on the 25th, is there a motion to do just that?
Seven, eight.
Okay, we have a motion that we keep our regular schedule, which is to have our next meeting on Monday, the 24th, and Tuesday, the 25th. Any discussion? Yes, sir?
Will the agenda be pushed or will it be doubled up?
That's a good question.
We probably add some things. We had, for the Monday night, we had four things on the agenda, we'll probably add two more, but we'll keep our Tuesday, so that we'll be in, as it is, so we can be in the chamber at 7:00.
It may be too early to, to answer your question.
And we have a coffee talk scheduled for this coming Monday, which we'll have to deal with, I guess.
Yeah. We have a, to answer your question, will be a double agenda. Yeah, sure.
And all of the city managers request, there will be additional ones.
All right, so the, the motion is to keep our regular schedule, which is to have our next regular council meeting as scheduled. council meeting as scheduled for the 25th at 7:00 PM in the council chamber, preceded by a 5:00 work session, and preceded by a Monday, the 24th work session. Any further discussion? Madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No, I like this 2015 plan.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Russ?
Yes. All right. Any further business? Here are none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming and for participating, and thank you, Dr. Patton, and your team, for everything that you're doing.